All right, I will call a session in order at six o'clock. So tonight, we'll go through the work session for the housing production strategy. Then we'll go to our regular meeting, pledgeable agents roll call, public comment. Do we have any changes to the agenda? That anybody is gonna present or? No, in fact, so. And then our consent agenda and business followed by report from the city and your committee and council reports and then staff update, so. Tyler, you want to get us started?
Yeah, thank you, Council President.
Do we need to do a roll?
That's actually optional.
It's optional?
Yeah.
Then we can skip it. Let's just get it going, yeah.
All right.
It's all on video.
Exactly.
Well, the title of this evening's work session is pretty much directly what you're gonna get, Housing Production Strategy Introduction. We have a couple of members from Echo Northwest. I always want to say ECO, Echo Northwest, Nicole Underwood and Beth Goodman, who you've met before. We also have Kelly Reed from DLCD on virtually this evening.
I think this.
Yep, it's perfect. And so really, the goal this evening is to run through what the HPS is. The consultants are gonna ask a couple of questions and get some direction from the council. Some important timelines to note, the HPS, Housing Production Strategy, excuse me, needs to be adopted by December 31st of 2025. So we have a little over a year to get through this work. It's a mandate from the state to get this, you know, adopted and in order. So brief update from me, I'll turn it over to Kelly for her presentation. Kelly, thanks for joining us this evening. Hope you're feeling all right.
Are you all ready for me at this point?
Yeah, Kelly, we thought maybe if you could run your portion. So that's in the cold, that's good.
Okay, great. Am I sharing my screen then?
Yeah, if you can, that'd be great.
Okay, I will do that. First, I just want to say, thanks for having me and I apologize for not being there in person. I, coming down with a bit of a cold, you can probably hear it a little bit of my voice, and I didn't want to share that with you all, but I'm happy to be on, on your screen. I am the, your regional representative from the Department of Land Conservation and Development. So I, I cover Clackamas and Multnomah Counties. And I'm kind of the liaison between all the local jurisdictions and the state for, for DLCD. And I, I worked in Clackamas County. I worked actually for the City of Oregon City in the Planning Department for a number of years before joining DLCD in 2022. So I'm familiar with, you know, the work that, the type of work that Kelly O'Neil does and your planning team and I appreciate it a lot. So I will share my screen. I have just a handful of slides tonight. Let's see. Sorry.
I should note, too, we have a couple of planning commissioners in attendance. Thank you for being here this evening. And then our Kelly, Kelly O'Neil is out sick tonight. So if there are questions of staff, Jeff and I will be, do our best to provide answers, but we may need to follow up with you after the meeting if there's anything that we can't provide any clarification on.
Let me try to get this into presentation, right mode here. Okay, does that look okay to you all? Great. Okay, so I'm just here to give you a bit of a context on like why you're here doing this housing production strategy right now. And so, as you probably know, Goal 10 is our statewide, one of our statewide planning goals. It's a housing goal. It's been around for a long time, for about forty or fifty years. Planning for housing has been all about, you know, projecting your population, projecting your housing need, inventorying your buildable lands and then accommodating that needed housing through either through either a UGB expansion or up zoning within your UGB, urban growth boundary, sorry. Or, you know, maybe finding that you have enough buildable lands for accommodating that housing. So, you know, this is the approach that Sandy used back in 2017 when you did expand your urban growth boundary. You found that you did need more land for that. And so, you know, this is kind of the, the framework that, that you all utilized. But in 2019, the state legislature, you know, kind of facing, in the state, we're facing rising housing costs and a housing shortage. And so the state legislature passed House Bill 2003, which changed, you know, how Goal 10 works, basically. So the law, that statute or legislation does three things. It directed the Oregon Housing and Community Services and DLCD to come up with this statewide program methodology called the Regional Housing Needs Analysis, and I'll talk more about that later. It, it kind of required cities over ten thousand in population to, to do the housing, to analyze their housing needs on a schedule instead of just as, you know, as they wanted to. And, and then it also created a new element called the Housing Production Strategy. And you'll hear me say a few times tonight, housing, production, affordability and choice. And so that's kind of, those are kind of like the three big components of this new framework of we, we, for, for this whole state of Oregon, we are focusing on not just housing production, but also affordability and choice in all of our communities. And so this, this slide displays, sorry, I'm gonna, I need to adjust my screen so I can even see my notes, thanks. Okay, so this slide kind of depicts the, the Goal 10 requirements, the new Goal 10 requirements. But I'm gonna talk about the Housing Production Strategy, which is kind of where you are in the process. You adopted your housing capacity analysis already. The Housing Production Strategy is basically an eight-year action plan that contains set of specific actions, tools and policies to address the housing need that you found through your housing capacity analysis. So a few things to know about the Housing Production Strategy. One is that DLCD reviews the Housing Production Strategy. Once you adopt it locally, your staff will submit it to DLCD and we have ninety days to review that. We can approve, approve with conditions or remand that. We just started doing this, because all this is so new, we just started doing that work last year when the first set of cities adopted their housing production strategies. All of them were approved or approved with conditions. And so, you know, they, they, we'd have, we post them all on our website. We have a comment period, a public comment period for each of those, and then we write up an approval kind of report for those. So we review the, the document to basically ensure that it meets the goals of the statute to, that it, that it meets those goals of housing production affordability and choice. The main components of, of your housing production strategy, kind of what we'll be looking for is data, right? Using data to better understand the housing needs of people in Sandy, engagement. The statute requires you to engage with community members, producers and consumers, I believe is the terminology used of, of housing to inform kind of the actions in your, in your plan or your strategies. And then, of course, the strategies themselves are the heart of the, of the document and, and kind of the timeframe for each of those. So what do you plan to do over the next eight years and when do you plan to, to implement that?
Hey, got a question here from one of the.
Yes, thank you, because I can't see anything except myself and, go ahead.
A few things. First, if we could get these notes that she's kind of referring to, that would be helpful because I just have the screen slides. But if you could just zoom up on your notes, you talked about, do you need data to assess the housing demand?
Oh, like what it was? You can see my notes, that's interesting. Yeah, no, I mean, I, those are just my tech, my own notes, but, so they might not be written in a way that, for your consumption, but hopefully they are fine. Because some of them are reminders, yes. So the data is really, I'm talking about, and I think Beth will talk about this, the contextualized housing needs. So it's like everything you did in your housing capacity analysis, all that data that you collected, and then as well as any new data that's added by your consultant team, Beth and Nicole. You know, and then any, any like qualitative data that you collect, right? You're, you're talking to folks, right? You're, you, you're talking to people in the community about what they think Sandy's housing needs are, and so that's what, what I mean when I say data.
What, we just talk to people in the community about what they think housing needs are?
We're gonna cover that when we do our presentation. We'll talk to you about the stakeholders.
Yeah. I wonder if I can. Is that better? Now are you seeing my notes still?
That's, that's perfect now.
Oh, oh, there we go, okay, interesting. Okay, sorry about that. So I'm gonna move on to the next slide. I think I've covered everything here. Oh, one last thing. So the, once you, so you see the little green icons here for the Housing Production Strategy and the second one says Reflect, Measure and Report. So there is a midterm checkpoint. So after four year, you're four years in, so four years from now or from 2025, so 2029, there'll be like a midpoint check-in where you report on how it's going, like what strategies have you implemented, how have they gone? And if you have, if it didn't go as planned, like, you know, what's your Plan B or can you do something different? And, and then every year, every city is reporting their production to DLCD. So as you issue building permits and then as those building permits get finalized and, and like you issue the occupancy, the, those, that data will come to DLCD. And so we had, we're actually working with another agency on a dashboard, an online dashboard that will show all of that information from all the cities throughout the state and how that's working. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a moment. But really, you know, what DLCD, what the statute calls for and what DLCD will be looking for is do, do the strategies in your HPS address the housing need that you found when, when you did your housing capacity analysis and housing needs analysis. And so it says contextualize housing need. I, I try to avoid using that term because it doesn't, it's a little bit wonky, but, but really, are your strategies addressing the need that you found in Sandy? So if you found a need for, you know, workforce housing or accessible housing, do you have strategies in your plan that are going to, you know, address that? And then also, again, I'm not gonna read all of these bullets, but, you know, taken together as a whole, each, you know, however many strategies end up in your final housing production strategy, when you kind of look at them all together, are you, are you gonna achieve, you know, fair enough equitable housing outcomes? So do they address housing, production, affordability and choice? To repeat that once, once more. So one last thing I want to mention is the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I mean, I'm working and I need you to go in a different room. Go.
I'll be in there.
I'm very sorry. Get her out. Can you shut that? I'm really sorry about that. It's dinner time at my house.
We get it.
So, and I can't find my mute button either, so. So the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis. So, so in addition to, you know, adding, changing how kind of what we do for Goal 10, the legislature said, DLCD, adopt some more, change your rules, update your rules on, on all of this to kind of fully implement this program. And so we are working on that right now. Called the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis or ONA. So we have three topic areas that we're working on. I think the important thing to note for the city of Sandy is that you are working under two days rules. And even though we are adopting new rules and they will be adopted, some of them will be adopted on January 1st of 2025, you don't have to worry about that with what you're currently doing. You're kind of already, since you already started, you're working under those current rules. When you, when Sandy will, you know, need to look at these new rules that we adopt is in eight years, you know, when you, when you do your second housing production strategy in eight years. So that first topic area of housing needs and production, that is, that's kind of like, how do you do a housing production strategy? So you don't have to worry about that now, you're already doing it under the rules we have today. The second bucket here, where I have the yellow arrow pointing up, that's housing acceleration. So this is, this is something that will affect Sandy over the next eight years. So when you do that midpoint check-in, you know, you'll be working under the, the new rules that we're adopting. And so that's really about how we're measuring progress. And then the, it creates a housing acceleration program. So for cities that aren't really making much progress or aren't really implementing their housing production strategy, that's where DLCD will be able to refer cities to the housing acceleration program and then connect them with resources and kind of do a deep dive and an audit and try to figure out what's keeping, what's keeping this city from really reaching its goals. And then the last bucket is for housing capacity and urbanization. So that, that's kind of about how we do the buildable land inventory and urban growth boundary expansion if that, if that's happening. So that's a third set of rules that we're working on. So we have draft rules that are out now. We have hearings coming up and public comment periods. And actually, your staff has been in the loop and we actually received comments already from Kelly O'Neil, so thank him for that. I know he's not there tonight, but. So we're working on all of this simultaneously as folks are doing their housing production strategies and such. So I, I'll be here, I mean, this is all I have for you tonight. I'm happy to answer questions and I'll stay on and listen in to, if you have questions after Beth and Nicole talk to you. So thank you very much.
We'll be building on what Kelly just said, so we may well answer some of your questions as we go along.
Yeah, I have one question, though. I appreciate that this is all very aspirational and I get that this is kind of a canned thing that gets presented to every city. And yet, I feel like I was kind of asked, mouthing the question, does she know about our moratorium? And, you know, you're talking about in four years, we're gonna grade you on how well you've done and all that. And it's like, this is the problem where we have, you know, local land use planning being done at a statewide level because our interest in trying to solve the same problems that you're talking about cannot be done at the statewide level with one size fits all. And so I'm just trying to understand if you could just comment on something more specific to Sandy as to what your expectations are given where we are with things right now and more on, on new development.
Right, absolutely. Thanks for the question. I, I am aware of, of the moratorium and I've been working with your staff. So I, we've had a few conversations already with Jeff and Kelly and Beth, Nicole about, you know, how Sandy's gonna have a, a, a housing production strategy that probably looks a little bit different than other communities. And I think the key is that, you know, there are lots of, there's lots of ground, I guess, things that the city could work on to put in place, you know, zoning codes and programs and, and just things that you can kind of do in the next eight years that maybe will set the city up for future production, you know, when you, when your new wastewater treatment plant comes online. And so I, there's a lot of prep work that can, that can support you later on. And then, you know, as far as the measuring your progress, I mean, those, I, I understand that you, you have a certain amount of permits that can still be issued over the next several years. You know, there's a cap on that. And so, and, and that you have a lot of units that have been approved, but maybe haven't been built yet. And so you will be, you know, over the next few years, you'll be issuing permits and you'll be issuing certificates of occupancy and you'll be showing production. And so I, I, I think it's too early to say like how, you know, what you're, you're, what you look like on the dashboard. But I will also say that, you know, when we're talking about like referring cities to the, to the acceleration program, you know, that's, it, it's going to be, we're, we're writing the rules about that right now, so I can't really say with any certainty exactly how that will work. But, but the comments that we received from Kelly O'Neil actually, you know, urged DLCD to, in the rules somehow consider, take into consideration like cities that are dealing with the moratorium and, you know, build in some sort of understanding of that. But really, I think the acceleration program could potentially be a good tool for any cities, like it could be a way to connect you with, with state resources, right? To connect the city with the governor's office or Business Oregon grant programs to kind of help with your, your major need, which is, you know, the wastewater treatment plant, but, you know, any, anything else that could help move the needle. You know, I, I want to say that I, I don't know if the rules are going to really specifically address like a moratorium situation, but, you know, DLCD is only gonna be able to have a certain number of cities, you know, that we're working with in the acceleration program every year. And I could, I can imagine that there are gonna be cities that have other issues that are more kind of, you know, eat more complicated, you're probably, you're, where you're, Sandy's big barrier, right, is you need money for wastewater treatment plant. That's, it's not, it's not easy, but it's straightforward, right? And I think there are gonna be cities that maybe don't have as straightforward of issues. And so those might be where DLCD might decide to spend more of its resources. And, and so I, I think that's all I can say about, about that at this point, given that we haven't finalized those rules yet.
Everybody good?
Okay, so my presentation builds off of what Kelly was just saying. And it's a little, it's got a little bit of some of the same information in it, but not too much. So a housing capacity analysis and a housing production strategy, they build on each other. So we know from the housing capacity analysis about your buildable land, some about your housing market, your forecast of new housing, that kind of thing. In the housing production strategy, we refine that understanding of housing need. We update a little bit of the data, so things like housing sales price and rents, that kind of data changes very quickly. So we've updated that. And then we, just talking to stakeholders, which we'll talk about in a few moments, to make sure that the information we're getting from the data, which is census data as well as market data, to make sure that we understand what's going on in Sandy. And then we have been working with staff to identify potential action strategies. And that's what partially we'll be talking about tonight. And the first strategy is, you know, the first issue, the first barrier is really about wastewater and the fact that you need, I don't know, the numbers keep going up. I've heard at one point a hundred and thirty million, I'm sure it's more than that. So while it's a straightforward problem, it's a tricky problem. And so Sandy can't really support a lot more housing beyond what your current, I'm sorry.
Wastewater and fresh water. We actually have two constraints that we're working towards.
Okay, I've heard more about wastewater.
And it puts the price tag more than two hundred.
We're having to redo the hookup to the new water filtration plant and.
Okay.
So we're, we're capacity constraining.
And so you've got a certain number of ERUs that you have, that you can use to support development of housing as well as other types of development in the city. And so over this next, I don't know, if, if it's five years, if it's eight years, if it's longer than that, you're really going to be constrained in the amount of housing that you can have built here. So we're taking that into consideration. And quite frankly, whenever I get a chance to comment on these kind of things, how will this work, you know, for different cities, I keep bringing Sandy up and saying ginormous infrastructure costs, how are, you know, how does this feel like Sandy's supposed to deal with this? And that gets attention. So, so the housing production strategy is really about actions. Our project schedule, our grant ends in May of 2025, so we will be finishing up the work by May of 2025. We may well have, we've got a separate contract with the city for presentations to the city council, so it may well be that one or more of our presentations to the city council is a little after May of 2025. So about contextualizing housing need, I'm not gonna repeat a lot of the data that you saw last time because you've seen it from the housing production strategy. I'm sorry, you've seen it from the housing capacity analysis rather. So it's need for housing by income level and it's also considering how needs are different for different groups of people. So people experiencing homelessness have a different need. People of color or in different racial or ethnic groups, their barriers to accessing housing are going to be different than the overall average. People over sixty-five years old and people with disability, they have a different set of barriers to accessing housing. In all of these cases, a lot of it's about affordability and then it's also about accessing housing without discrimination and then housing that meets the household's specific needs. So we've been having stakeholders discuss discussions with the, the groups that you see here on the screen, and I'm not gonna repeat all of that. I'm gonna go through a little bit of what we've heard. If you have questions, Nicole's gonna answer the questions because she's actually been talking to people. So what we're hearing is not surprising about rising costs of housing utilities and necessities that are really straining residents, particularly your young families, your single parents, your lower income workers and your seniors on fixed incomes. Utility rates are another version of an affordability issue other than just rents and the cost of ownership. A lot of people need multiple jobs to make, make ends meet. So it's not just a two-income household, but it may well be a two-income household with people with more than one job per person. You're seeing increased demand for your support services like your food bank and your energy assistance programs. That's another way of looking at it and seeing that, that certainly some groups, your community are strained. And then some seniors, they just don't have the awareness of, or they face difficulties accessing support services, particularly when information is online. So having it online may well be a barrier. And these are community development sorts of issues. What we're also hearing is that Sandy has limited support for residents experiencing homelessness. And so those include, include local youth, lower income workers and people in social security. I don't know if it's true or not, but there's certainly a perceived community residence, resistance to services. And so certainly that's limited some of the services you have in the community. You don't have transitional and emergency housing here in Sandy. And so people who are experiencing homelessness or you don't have enough of it, aren't able to access those resources here. And mental health stability is often a significant barrier to accessing housing. Um, to the, to the extent you have people here with mental health issues, they're more likely to be experiencing homelessness. And that's just generally true when you look at houselessness.
Question. One of the questions that's kind of come up that changes things is a couple of months ago, we had the county homeless coordinators and NUPA from Kent Farm here, and I asked, you know, how many homeless do we have in Sandy? And they couldn't tell me. They said, and, and they said the last count was like twelve. And so I'm just kind of trying to understand, as I understand it, there's been different definitions from different groups as to who, what's considered homeless and, and all that. So with regards to what you're talking about with limited supports, can you kind of clarify the intent of the definition you're using?
I think we're using a very specific and only definition of homelessness, because it does vary, because when you have people who are doubling up. I don't think we're using a very specific and only definition of homelessness, um because it does vary, because when you have people who are doubling up. Um, so like sleeping on other people's couches, that's a version of homelessness. Um, if you had people, you don't have an emergency shelter, but if you did, that's a version of homelessness, then you've got people who are unsheltered. Um, and oftentimes those people are are sort of extra hard to to count. Um, so when we're talking about homelessness, we're talking about sort of those broad definitions that could include any of those groups. Am I missing anybody?
I I think youth as well, like the Aunt Aunt Farm was specifically talking, and some of them, they they are housed, they are put in housing, but they're considered. Considered part of this probably.
They're kept surfing or sleeping where they can. And and to my, to my knowledge, in that, in that meeting, he said we have about twenty-five of those.
And you get that information from the school district, so that's um information that's a little more reliable. Um, because the schools are able to track it a little bit better um than you can track, you know, homelessness more generally.
These themes, where did these come from? Like, where where does this information come?
This this information is from those interviews, and so what I did is I just, and yeah, I took took the interviews and obviously the homelessness one. Came from a more of Aunt Farm and a couple of the other providers, and then I basically themed them up into what we heard for some of these different groups.
So it's you guys. Hey, how come, you know, going back to your stakeholders side, why why not some of the businesses that had a large number of people? Because that seems like it would have more to do with, you know, are is it creating a difficulty attracting people? Keeping people retaining, uh, it seems like this is, you know, just just a thought.
So to a certain degree, why not more interviews? It's it's about limited budget. Um, and so we know from some of the data that we have uh about employment and wages. We know some things about wages for businesses, uh jobs in Sandy. Um, and so we can tell that oftentimes people who are in uh service jobs, even if there's two service workers per household. They can't afford rent. So we have some information about this. A lot of this is uh information. Um, uh, from groups that we just have no information about, you know, to speak of, or very little.
That doesn't make you feel pretty good. Um, it it feels very circular, self um fulfilling, but you might find the answer looking for if you look that way.
Okay, um, so I think your feedback is, uh, we should be talking to um some business uh owners and operators.
Not a lot, uh, but there's a couple of big ones. The city's a big employer. The school district is a big employer. I I think a couple of data points might be influential.
We'll take that back and discuss it with uh Tyler and Jeff and and uh Kelly. That's the name I wasn't getting, the person who's not here.
That's a question for you. You know, I was, I took a peek at Gresham's finished housing production strategy. And I noticed one of the things that they focused on, at least in theirs, was the the income capacity. And what I would call, they stopped at median income. So if you were between eighty and a hundred twenty percent of the MFI, nothing above that. So everything is is more or less focused on low or extremely low income.
I would say call it middle and low and extremely low, yeah.
So any any wage, any business wage higher than median average would not be relevant. To the housing production strategy as per the state guideline under that bill?
Well, I mean, I mean, when you think about um what are the barriers to housing? Um, so you've got some barriers to producing any housing. So your wastewater treatment. Um, problem, uh, your water tree, uh, water capacity, those are barriers to any kind of housing, no matter how much it costs. Um, and uh then when you think about uh barriers um to housing where you might make more public in investments. Um, that often points to that uh median uh household income or lower. The housing production strategy really focuses on uh the the middle and lower income households. So what you need to get um single-family detached housing. Um, is often really different than what you need to get housing that is affordable at that middle and lower income groups. And so that's why it's focused more there.
But as a city council and as a city, aren't you looking at a bigger breadth when you're talking about land use? It's not just the lower to mid range when you have a captive land and you have to expand it. You really have to consider, okay, we want to use, and I'll just throw a number out, sixty-four percent of the land for that type of property. Then you can part and parcel that property for that function, but you have to also consider what you need for the other half. Or the other proportion, which I and I don't know whether it's a large proportion or a small proportion in Sandy myself. I'm guessing it's it's rather small, but I just don't know what the percentage is.
Um, so I don't have the percentages right here because we cut that part out, because we were trying to get to. Where we can tell you some of the the actions that we're looking at. So the barriers to producing higher-cost housing are, do you have enough land? We know from your housing uh capacity analysis, you have enough land. Is that land serviced? We know from the discussions that your water and wastewater services are a problem. Do you have the right zoning? Um, and are there barriers in zoning? Um, and so we'll be looking at zoning barriers. We'll probably be talking to um some market rate developers just a little bit later in the process um to ask the question of. Okay, these are the the kind of strategies that we're talking about for market rate housing, which is the kind of housing that you're talking about. Um, uh, are we hitting things that would, uh, if there was uh water and wastewater capacity? That would make it more plausible to build that kind of housing in Sandy. So we just haven't quite gotten to that point. Um, we have to have some i- ideas before we can really talk to those groups of people, so.
I think it's important when we throw things out like wastewater barriers or even moratoriums to recognize. That's a future event, not the current. So we. They're issuing permits and stuff, and I and I think, I'm I'm just going to ask you to be more precise when we when we discuss these things with us or anybody else. That we're talking about now, what timeframe we're talking about now, five years, ten years?
So we are talking about what can be done in the next eight years, very specifically. And it's not clear um in any of the discussions we've had, when your your water, uh, your wastewater moratorium could be lifted. Um, that that has.
Well, it's also not clear in the next eight years what developments we'll put in and ask for things either. We have to make some assumptions, right?
Well, we have made some assumptions in the housing capacity analysis about future growth. We know that uh. Uh, if we looked at twenty years from now, if we looked at how growth looks in Sandy. I'm going to predict that it would be slower, you know, in these out years. Um, before you had your your wastewater and your water issues uh taken care of, and then it will probably increase at least for a while. Um, um, after the moratorium is uh uh lifted, um, and you're able to have more development. What's it look like beyond that? Well, you'll have to do another housing capacity analysis um in eight years. So you'll be able to update that forecast and update what's going on, the current events. That's that's why it's important that this happens every eight years.
Okay.
I guess the one thing that I would add to that though is, um, and I think we talked about it when you interviewed me is just the. Um, the fact is, is that, you know, our utility bills are high and and scheduled to go higher unless we can get, uh, you know. No tens of millions of dollars dropped in our lap, and so we have to be realistic about that until we get manna from heaven type of thing. And so the concern that I have expressed to you all is the fact that, you know, building more affordable housing, which then, you know. Those folks may want to, you know, because they are low income, want discounts on their, you know, entitled to discounts on their water and sewer bill. Which then, you know, that makes the the other folks need to pay even more. And so this idea that we're trying to do a whole lot more affordable housing, um. But also pay these larger utility bills has to kind of factor into what our plan is for the future. What is, you know, that, it's not just the infrastructure needs that we have in the moratorium, it's also the sustainable. Ability to pay the utility bills and, you know, what kind of population can afford the utility bills and things like that, because. It's it's a real, you know, we need a balance.
Certainly, um, and what I would say is in eight years, when you're looking at your. Your seven years, when you're looking at your new target for um development that you'll have from the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis. Um, that um certainly should be a discussion um at that point. So it's going to be really different than what we had going through this process.
Some of these themes are different from the other dozen plans that you guys put together this year. Are they the same? Is there anything different from Sandy or the infrastructure when we look at these plots?
Uh, uh, some of them are are different. I mean, utility rates are certainly different. Um, I don't know.
Issue in the other cities.
Uh, oh, it it varies, um, but high utility rates can certainly be a a way that you end up with slower growth over time. Um, because your utility costs are higher. Um, so if you looked at the work that that we did in Gresham, for instance. Um, it's got a a different emphasis because the community in Gresham is different. Um, if you looked at the work that we did last year in uh Newport, um, it's got a really different uh issue because their issues are different. Um, that some of it's in in common, it's partially about infrastructure, but it's very different reasons, so.
Some of the criticism of your outfit has suggested that the cookie cutter approach isn't customized nearly enough. And so I'm just trying to understand what's unique to us and not for the player.
Well, to a large degree, um, uh, the uh actions that a city has already done. Um, and that can a city can choose, those are certainly unique to each city, um, and different cities are choosing to do different things. So for instance, we were uh in Grants Pass last year, um, and I was talking to them about, oh, should you consider a geo bond? A general obligation bond to support um a housing development of middle and lower income housing development. And they were like, don't mention that outside this room, please, because, you know, you'll just get thrown out of the city. Um, and in other cities, um, they're very much like, yeah, we're considering a bond. So, um, you went to correct.
Yeah, I I would say that you're not wrong, that some of these barriers are, like, some of the themes and the barriers are the same. I mean, when we talk to. I I I'm working with some other cities right now, and when we hear about some of the barriers for seniors and being able to age in place, like. They're they're not necessarily very different for some of these groups. In some ways, they are. Utility rates is not one that I'm hearing in other cities. Uh, not to the extent that we're hearing here, but, um, yeah, so I would say like, you know, I think there, especially when you look at the Portland metro as a whole. And just the housing costs in general, um.
So some of our colleagues work in in places like Montana, um, in Washington, in California. Um, what I think you'd find is generally speaking, it's not hard to go and name the barriers. Um, uh, the barriers are really similar in different places. Um, there's different reaction from different communities. So. All right, so developing the housing production strategy. So this is something that I I think is really, you know, important to consider, is that the city has a specific set of roles. In development of a housing production strategy, and this is one of those that I've I've heard different cities considering their roles in a few of these things really differently. And I'll mention that in a few moments. So city has a lot of uh influence, more influence on public policy. So the zoning, the density, your design requirements, um, and for um uh market rate housing. Um, those things have to align um to get market rate housing done, um, to allow a developer to build a profitable project. Um, that has to have land um with services um at reasonable acquisition costs. Um, uh, when I've worked in Good River, for instance, um, uh, and then Bend and. This is my work somewhere else, that they were just talking about these, uh, McGlendall, the acquisition costs were just astonishing. Um, the cost of the land. Um, market feasibility, you have to be able to achieve the rents and the sales prices to support a profitable project. Um, and then capital, this is one that uh in Salem, some of the stakeholders were suggesting that uh. A lot of cities, they don't participate much in the capital stack, under words, a city isn't a bank. Um, and we had some stakeholders suggesting, oh, the city should use its full faith and credit to back uh construction loans. To which I haven't heard from Salem staff, but I was thinking. Um, what were, you know, offer loans um to developers, and I was thinking, I probably wouldn't do that if I was a city councillor, but you know. So, so, you know, there's different ways that cities can uh can have a different uh role in these types of things. And of course, you're not the only stakeholder in this. Um, you know, the federal and state government um do a lot about. Uh, funding uh affordable housing. Um, the city of Sandy has its roles around uh public facility planning, zoning. Uh, funding from things like urban renewal, um, that kind of thing. And then there are other organizations in Clackamas County, which we've just listed a few of them, that have different roles. Um, and so the city is is one among many.
And and I would add onto your previous slide, the circle one, you know. When you're talking about affordable housing or, you know, very low-income housing, you know, what you need with that is a component of services.
Yes.
And so that's.
For some of that, uh, for for some of that, so for permanent supportive housing, you certainly need services. For some low-income housing, you don't need as many services.
Who needs them? You know, I mean, yeah.
Uh, there's some, there's some low-income housing that's just plain low-income housing, um, that doesn't have any of the services that go with it.
So, but, you know, especially for the homeless and all that, a lot of services involved. And so that's kind of what I'm talking about is that. That's, and that's kind of where this next slide that you just run, you know, when you talk about like the county and all that, that's kind of where I just feel like. You know, we got a hands full. We're trying to run the library for the library, two libraries for the county and the transit. For TriMet going from Damascus to Eagle Creek to Estacay, you know, we're doing all this stuff for all these different places and we got our hands full. And so the idea that we could then take on services on top of all the stuff we have is just.
I think the idea is that the city would uh would have a role in things like mental health services or anything like that. Um, the city might be a partner in in certain ways, um, which I'll talk about in a few moments. Um, uh, in a a nonprofit or the housing authority or whomever, building that housing and then providing services through that. Um, but um I wouldn't imagine, I haven't seen cities get into things like uh mental health services, that kind of thing. Um, what I have seen cities do is if they have land that is publicly owned land that isn't needed for other public uses. They can sort of put that into the kitty, um, and you know, that's that's the way they can partner. Um, or making sure that the design requirements have a path for letting uh that kind of housing be built. Um, and that is, you know, um, is acceptable in the community. I'm thinking about some housing in Eugene where I live. Um, that is is definitely that, it is it's simpler, um, it doesn't have a fancy facade or anything like that, um. It's that kind of thing.
It's just that sustainability of those services, you know, is the county going to keep funding, or whoever is supposed to be funding all this? Are they gonna, you know, is this nonprofit gonna dry up and blow away in five years, and then you're, you know. Right, and that's kind of my, yeah, yeah, so.
So we've got like, one at a time, and we still have ten slides to get through, so.
All right, I'll I'll go through them. So different strategies have different uh levels of impact. Um, so the strategies that have more impact essentially are things that um have to do with resources. Things like removing regulatory barriers or being a partner, they have in and of themselves less impact. Um, but they're necessary, but not sufficient in themselves. Um, to to support housing of the type that we're we're talking about, the low and middle-income housing, um. So, uh, none of the uh actions that we suggested in HPS, none of them are on their own. There's there's no silver bullet for this. We've been, you know, constructing this problem my whole lifetime, so you know, fifty years and longer is going to take a while to uh. You know, as a nation, to unravel some of these problems. Um, you've got a lot of existing things that you've been doing in Sandy that in the HPS, we we essentially call it, you get credit for. So, you know, you've allowed single-room occupancies, um, uh, you've got, you know, ADU provisions, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and so we acknowledge those in the HPS, and when we're doing that evaluation that Kelly was talking about. About achieving more fair and equitable outcomes, um, we talked about those things in there. You're already doing this, so you don't have to do it. You know, you already allow ADU, so you don't have to allow ADU because you've already do it. Um, and that meets some of the housing needs that we're talking about. Um, so as we're starting to think about um different actions to include in the HPS. Um, so uh, we're leading with the wastewater capacity limitations, we'll add the water capacity limitations there. Limitations uh on city funding and staff capacity, um, because you don't have a, you know, big staff to be able to execute on. Uh, uh, on, you know, certain types of programs. Um, high construction costs and financing costs are driving up the overall housing price nationwide. You guys can't control that. Um, limited funding is available to support development of affordable um housing or rehabilitation. But there is some funding available, and can Sandy tap into that? Um, ensuring that higher density. Um, ensuring that higher density housing is in appropriate uh, locations where you have accesses. Access to services like transit, like uh, grocery stores, medical services, um, those kind of things. And then preserving community character and safety while supporting um homelessness services and affordable housing. So balancing those out, that's, that's really where we're starting, the considerations from. Um, I'm gonna skip the barriers piece. Um, when we talked to the service providers who we've spoken with. Um, their suggestions were, you know, can the city involve, um, expand some involvement in human services? Um, such as partnering uh, with service providers, um, to help them be able to uh, to provide their services more easily. And not the city assuming the provision of those services, but what can the city do to uh, to make it easier for the uh, service providers? Um, uh, offer rehabilitation assistance for um, homeowners or renters. Well, there's some state programs that are. Coming online or are already online. Can you tap into funds for that? Where the city has more access to funds than uh, necessarily uh, nonprofits might. Um, I believe that there's some county funding.
I am, I'm gonna just interrupt it because it was a surprise to me, um, you're, the Sandy Community Action Center was not aware. That we already do the utility and internet assistance programs.
Um, well, then, so that, that, there's a, a thing that.
What's that?
The internet one just expired.
Yeah.
There's a thing that is a, a little, you know, that's easy to fix.
Right, it's just communication, because, yeah.
Darn humans, they need the communication.
Yeah.
Um, so, uh, you know, suggesting supporting more rental housing development, whether it's affordable or market rate. Um, and ha- enhancing outreach about available resources. Um, so essentially, uh. Support, support or encourage.
What does that mean as a council?
Um, make sure you've got enough land zone for it, make sure that you have, uh, design requirements that, um, allow. Um, for uh, multifamily housing. Uh, I don't remember what else they may have been suggesting in this support or encourage.
So many things that are already.
I have to.
Some of the things that were on the other page, probably start to check out, okay.
And then, um, support development of transitional housing, and that kind of thing is probably going to be in partnerships. So is there an organization that you can partner with that hopefully will not evaporate in five years? Um, uh, where the city can in some way, uh, help them, um, with, uh, you know. Uh, you know, a little enhanced development, uh, uh, process, um, give them more of a, through that. Um, uh, is there a city-owned land, um, for instance, that kind of thing? That could be put into the kitty to support that kind of development. So, some of the, the things that we're looking at for actions. Are things like pursuing, uh, your wastewater facilities, uh, funding. Um, so, uh, I imagine that grant writing is going to be right, uh, right in there, in that action, um. Looking at financial resources to support housing development and preservation, so. Uh, you could, as a city, um, uh, have a, a construction excise tax. Which is a tax of up to one percent on newly constructed housing, um, where that tax goes into a fund. Um, and you have to do, you have to use it in some specific ways for part of it, and you can use it more generally for whatever you consider affordable housing. Um, actually implementing that kind of thing, um, is not the, would not happen in the HPS. It would be if we carried forward with it, uh, an action that, uh, the city would attempt to do at some point in this eight-year. Process, and when we do do it, well, we'll be setting a schedule. Um, and when I say we, I mean more staff and and city council will be setting what that schedule is. Um, in the HPS, and so some things may be earlier than than other things. I would imagine your wastewater facility work will be much earlier. Um, looking at urban renewal, um, and is there an opportunity, um, uh, in your urban renewal districts, um, as they uh, evolve? For a set aside, um, of funding for affordable housing. Well, that probably means some uh, changes to your existing urban renewal plans, or if you're looking at a new, new urban renewal district, in that urban renewal plan. That kind of thing, that's very much a setup that's not going to yield money, um, likely in the next, you know, five years, but. In the, you know, five to ten year range, because urban renewal takes a while to, to monetize essentially. Um, pursuing grants such as the CDVG grant, um, from the county, um, there may be funds there. Um, that are available for, for some of these different jobs, sorts of things. Looking at development code changes, um, and these things, they aren't required. Um, by the state, but these are things that the city could choose to do, um, things like allowing cottage cluster. Um, in more residential zones. Um, do you need short-term uh, rental regulations? If you don't need them, um, I can't remember if you guys track short-term rentals.
We don't have.
You don't, maybe you want to track them, um, and monitor them so that, you know, in eight years, you know more. About how many short-term rentals you have in the city, and you know, then if you decide that you should be regulating them. You can do it with information, and you can to collect transient lodging taxes more effectively. Um, uh, the state should be probably coming out with some pre-approved plan sets for accessory dwelling units and other types of housing. Um, if those pre-approved pla- plan sets fit with Sandy's character, can you adopt them and then allow them, and that? Uh, lowers the cost of developing those kind of housing because the plan says pre-approved. Um. Uh, so, uh, can you do expedited permitting or income restricted affordable housing? You don't get a lot of that, um, but when you do, um, can you do some expedited, uh, permitting, um? Use of publicly owned land for housing.
Excuse me, is that faster than they've already kind of, like, taken it from a hundred and twenty days to like, I don't know, fifty one, what is the new? They, they've really already cut.
That is some, something that I need to talk to hell about.
Okay.
So, I mean, we're talking about something that's occurs once every ten years, maybe.
Whoa, but, what's going on in Bornstead?
That's gonna, that fell into this. It's not a frequent.
No, it's not a frequent thing.
Once in the next eight years, twice possibly.
And, you know, if you can do that, you know, faster, um, is that, you know, perhaps going to give you a, a, a way to support that kind of. Housing development, just to smudge on.
Given our frequency, it seems like a little thing for the buck, but.
Uh, it's also a low cost. Um, that one's an extremely low cost. Um, so, you know, looking at the uh, land that's publicly owned. Um, and, uh, like, I don't know how much land Sandy owns that's publicly owned, that's not a park or not a public facility, um. But things like that, um, talking to your partners, does the county own some land here? Does ODOT own some land here? I'm really hoping that ODOT at some point will start letting go of some of its publicly owned land for this kind of housing. Um, I like to pick on ODOT. Um, so, uh, so these are the kind of actions, I'm paying attention to the time. Um, and what we might ask you to do is, uh, perhaps to send an email to, uh. To Kelly, um, and or Jeff, um, if you have, you know, potential actions. Um, that you think the city should be pursue, pursuing that we haven't included in here. Or if you think that there are actions in here that are just a bad idea, um, under no circumstances should we consider that. Um, what we'll be doing is bringing back more information about these actions, because right now they're very brief statements. Um, and they could mean a lot of different things. So.
May have a discussion?
Yeah, no, yeah, 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 yeah. I just, I just wanted to kind of, if, I mean, if we go over, obviously, it's, you know, it's an important conversation to have. So, I just wanted to keep us mindful.
So I'll just.
Please.
So, some of these, if we can, some of these are expensive and. Probably not something we would typically think about, and so I'm just curious, is there any support for council for pursuing things like? Dedicating money from the redevelopment agency for, for this kind of housing. We've never talked about it before, just curious, this isn't a commitment vote, but I just wanted, is there support for that? Because I'm more inclined to adopt the things that we've already done, because I feel like we've made an awful lot of changes already, so to me. I don't want to go a lot for, I'm kind of in the, some modest improvements would be my. Take on this, what we should put into this plan.
I'll, I'm, I'm lined up with you, Dan, except for I'm, what I'm hearing is, what I don't know about is what's available for the city. To get as far as grants are concerned, to help with affordable housing.
Yeah.
And that's what we haven't talked about.
If we put something in this, is if we get such and such, then we would do that, you know, yeah, I'm, I'm cool with that. I just don't want to. Make some commitment to, and I don't want to commit something for future councils to say like, in five years, we're going to. Uh, do it, that, that tax thing, well, that, that'll be a new set of councils, and I don't know how we commit for them.
And so, just so you know, if you, um, commit to something and it turns out it's not feasible. Um, like literally not feasible, um, or the uh, council decides not to do it. What your obligation is at that point is have a plan B. So what do you do instead of that? Um, and what I will say is that, at the state, um, and maybe the federal level will say, um, funding options keep evolving. Um, and, uh, I think the state isn't paying enough attention right now to need for funding for infrastructure, for instance.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, and for all types, you know, affordable housing in that, that lower on up to the middle, um, income housing. And so I, I choose to be a little optimistic.
At the end of the day, though, the, the HPS or housing production strategy is supposed to drive us towards. Meeting the housing capacity analysis, needs assess, or housing needs, housing capacity needs assessment, sorry.
Yeah.
Because that's the number that we're trying to achieve, is, that's our projection, and all the HPSs is our action plan. To achieve that number, and, oh, by the way, you need to do this every eight years, because before you were taking twenty years between them. The state wants you to do them more frequently. The question I would have is how? How compromised are we to the things that we commit to in that HPS? So we say we want to do these things, especially given the moratorium that we under, but we can't make those commitments. How do we make a commitment to do something that we can't commit to? Because we don't know how many hookups we're gonna have, and we don't know what that will be, and we can't project it because we don't know.
So we're not talking here about, uh, most of what we're talking about is putting things in place to make it easier to develop housing. Um, or to accumulate funds to support developing, development of housing. Um, I think it's very clear to everyone who has been involved in, uh, in this project at the state. Um, as well as at the city and also with your consultants, that, you know, I, I don't remember the number of units per year that, that Sandy's supposed to produce. Um, in the HCA, and it, it doesn't matter right now, you're gonna have a hard time achieving that. Um, over the eight, next eight years, because you have a very specific limit. Um, and so, you, we go into this knowing this, and we'll be saying that right upfront. Um, in the housing production strategy, so it's about setting up the future. Um, and, uh, taking that time over this next eight years to, to do the things that you can do. Um, of the type we're talking about here, even though it's only going to result in a certain amount. Of affordable housing production strategy in this next eight years.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, but I really kind of side with Chris a little more, because I think the problem that I'm struggling with. Is you're asking us to make decisions when the DLCD is still making the rules that might put us on the naughty list or not.
Yep.
So, so, I mean, we're already in, down this, this one list, right? We don't need to be on another. To where the state just comes in and starts telling us how to develop even more, and that's my concern with everything that I'm hearing today.
So what I will say is, uh, the housing, uh, the housing accountability, um, uh, not HEPO. Um, the other one, the housing acceleration program, there we go, um. From all I've heard, and you know, I, a lot of cities are very concerned about this. Is if you're not doing the things that you say you'll do in the HPS, then the question is, what are you gonna do instead? And what, uh, resources does the state have that helps Sandy achieve some of these? And as a city councillor, I'd be saying, well, do you have two hundred million dollars, please? Um.
I, I get that, but you're still asking us to make rules without that two hundred million dollars.
Mm-hmm.
That's my biggest hangup, is, is you, it's like literally, they, if, if they wanna, if they want us to come along, then we need the money.
So here's the.
Because I don't see this problem getting fixed in the.
And, and our plan has to reflect this reality. If we can't afford to do the infrastructure improvements that we need.
Yep.
That limit is fixed.
Oh, yeah.
And that's where we're gonna be for eight, ten, whatever years into the future until that's.
And that's what your HPS will say.
And so if we, if we have very low bar for what we say we're gonna do.
Low bar is the right answer.
A low bar for what we say we're gonna do because of all these reasons, and, you know, I'm not saying. So if we have the low bar, then we're not gonna get spanked if we've achieved the low bar, right?
The low bar is based on reality right now. I mean, to me, it, it'll be an interesting. Plan that we put in, because I don't think any other, your other communities have gone in there under the same situation yet, but.
Yeah, can we kind of, I was gonna say, can Kelly try?
Yeah.
We're kind of pushing it on you when it's really her question.
Yeah.
Yeah, Kelly, can you, you know, I know you, you opened up with, uh, DLCD recognizes that Sandy has some challenges. Currently, and not everyone's HPS is gonna be the same, and there's gonna be, you know, uh, approved or approved conditions. Is there a, a soft launch, like explore X, Y, and Z, or, um, you know, some other?
Yeah, um, definitely, a lot of, a lot of cities have, um. Individual strategies that are, uh, more like, study the possibility of doing this, or explore this, or. Consider, you know, evaluate whatever, and so, uh, those are necessary steps, right, to get somewhere. Um, so, I like the example that Beth used with the short-term rentals, right, like short-term rentals, especially in Sandy, like you guys have a lot of tourism. And so, the, uh, people, if people are using their homes as short-term rentals, then they're not available to someone, for someone to live in. Um, and so that, it, it's possible that that is, um, you know, driving up the costs and, and reducing the, uh. Reducing the number of, of, of units in Sandy, and so, um, you know. It, it takes time and effort to, to understand if that's a problem and start collecting data on that, and then. If you decide you want to tackle it, then, you know, coming up with some sort of regulatory, um. Regulatory, uh, uh, process for, um, short-term rentals, um, and then, you know, adapting that and, and getting it all. Set up, like, that takes years, right? Um, and, and there are lots of great examples, especially out on the coast, those cities that have, that have done that. Um, but it was still, you know, would take a while to set up, and, and so if you, you know, had a strategy that said, we're gonna study short-term rentals. Um, and, and, um, or, or maybe, maybe you have a little more certainty about that, and you want, and you're willing to commit now. To, um, you know, start, uh, limiting, you know, short-term rentals, um, in the city. And so then you take a few years to figure out how you do that, or in what way you do that, right? So, um, you know, I think a lot of your strategies, um, can be exploratory. But I will say, w- what I've heard, and, and so it's the housing, the housing division at DLCD, uh, um, does the review. Um, and I'm not part of the housing division, so I'm not part of that, uh, I'm, I'm not gonna review your HPS like myself, but, um. It does have to address the need, right? So if you, if, if your housing capacity analysis shows that, that you have a, a really. Large need for, um, housing that's affordable to people that are making sixty percent of the median income. Um, and, and your, your strategies and your HPS don't really get at that issue if they are not really. Targeted towards the, the really, the, the type of housing that's going to be affordable for those folks. Um, then that would be something that DLCD would flag and say, hey, you know, you don't have anything in here to. To help support the creation of units that are deeply affordable. Um, and, uh, and, you know, we, we can certainly, you know, make suggestions, and I'm, I'm sure that Beth, um, and Nicole have. Have some suggestions too, but, um, you know, it does, your strategies have to address the need, so if they don't. Um, then that would be a reason for DL, DLCD to remand it, um, and. You know, we haven't done that so far to, with any HPS that's come before us, but the last thing I want to say to answer this question is that. You know, we do, like, DLCD's funding your, this work right now, so we're, we, we're giving new grant funds. Um, that the legislature gave to us for this purpose, to, to pay for this HPS work in cities. We hope, um, that because the legislature wants all the cities to then implement their housing production strategies. That we will continue to get the grant funding, that will make it possible for us to give you money to do the studies. You know, to do the code amendments, to do the, um, like, setting up a program for, you know. You know, anything, any of your strategies that cost money, that cost you money, um, e- especially if it's planning work, like code amendments. Um, we very much hope to have those funds to be able to give, continue to give you grants to do this work, so we're, we're, we're not asking. We're not asking you to take on things that you can't afford. Um, I I think you can. You can keep your fingers crossed and expect that you'll probably be able to get some sort of grant funding from from DLCD. Um, you know, to it to implement some of these things over the next eight years.
Kelly, I'm gonna take issue with one point you said. And that is that the gap between the current pricing for rentals and for new homes. And that median target is so great. That if we implement every one of these things, we are not gonna hit that goal. With the exception of going into taxpayer funded, low income housing business, which the city isn't set up or funded to do. So I appreciate that we can get the studies paid for, but actually making measurable results and moving us towards that goal. This is not gonna do that, so. I you you gotta work harder at selling me on why we should spend a lot of time on this. Cause it, nothing, nothing that we said faster doesn't make it cheaper. And maybe a little, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we, I I I think our our whole program kind of understands that um. Cities don't, you you're not gonna be building the housing, right? You're like.
Does drive cost up, okay? Because when we went back to that graphic, in the middle of it was regulatory's pressure. And in the middle of that, we, the comment from over here was, that's not a factor. Well. If you look at the regulatory changes for electrical codes from ten years ago to now. It's added thousands of dollars to every unit that's constructed. So you wanna fix things, start at the top, fix the code, and then we can build cheaper housing. But these studies, these plans, this isn't it, sorry.
Yeah, I think to to respond to that, I think it just, um, the expectations are to to tackle issues that are within your control, right? Um, you don't control like the market, the bank loans or building codes, right? That's a state. That's the the state sets the building code, right? Um, so so. The expectation is not that the city's gonna be able to to make big moves like that um. That are not under your control. Um, but that, you know, any anything that is under your control that maybe you can do to move the needle a little bit. For some of these types of housing that are difficult to get built anywhere. Um, but especially in a place like Sandy that where, you know, ha- costs are high, you know, your land's not cheap. Um, and your infrastructure is not cheap and and you know, so those um. Really, you know, we're focused on things that are in the control of the city, that are in the realm of municipal government.
I guess for context, I wanted to look at what the HCA had. I I looked up the draft that I had. And it's between that, between twenty twenty three and twenty forty three. We were gonna need twenty four, twenty four dwelling units. Like fourteen hundred of those were single family detached. So then, you you know, there were six seventy nine. Five plus unit dwelling. So we're not talking about, you know, thousands and thousands of. Of homes. We're talking about a couple thousand homes over the course of the next nineteen years. Given, you know, where we're at. So I I do see the HPS as being just a forecasting plan. Uh, of action items to to help deliver the state's objectives and what they're trying to achieve, whether or not the work or not, I don't know. I hear you, Dan.
Okay, sorry, I'm done.
Beth or Kelly, I'm not sure who best to address this question to, but uh, is there a minimum number of strategies or approaches? That the HPS should identify?
No, not that I've heard. Um, I have seen cities put too many actions in their HPS. Um, and so uh, so I encourage cities to look at ten to fifteen good actions. Um, uh, in unless you're a big city, um, like Eugene is gonna have a lot more actions than that, because they've got a lot more staff.
It's it's two to five, two to. That's one to two a year. Which, uh, that's one or two projects a year.
And some of them will be smaller than others.
There's nothing small. I mean, smallest thing we do takes six months to implement, it seems like.
So a city has choices about how many actions to include.
You good?
I'm good with small, you know. Sorry, I said I was done.
You guys have any? One last question. K- um, Kelly, so. When I see the um, housing uh, um. The terms, the housing strategy report, is that right?
Housing production strategy.
For um, West Lynn and Lake Oswego, I, you know, I just can imagine they hardly have any affordable housing. And huge demand, I mean, since they hardly have any, I would expect them, most of their needs is to. Start filling that gap.
They haven't done those yet.
Um, so what I will say is that the ONA, the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis. In a lot of ways, i- it's intended to to correct some of that imbalance that you see. Um, if you look at places like Traffale and Gresham, um, uh, what they're doing and the. Structure of the housing types, you know, is really different than West Lynn or Lake Oswego or or other places. Um, and so I think what you'll see when you're doing your your next housing capacity analysis and you look at the targets and if you compare the targets. For different metro cities, I think you're gonna see some. Uh, expectations that are different for uh, places like La- Lake Oswego and and West Lynn.
Okay, well, I just, you know, we did the, I was part of the nineteen ninety seven, twenty forty plan where we did it. You know, we we zoned a lot of high density and medium density and villages with mixed use and this and that. And we just, you know, drank the Kool-Aid and just hit the ground running and. And so then, you know, what's happening, I feel like is all this, you know, push for even more when we were already, you know, in the choir, you know, singing the hymn. So. It is a little bit frustrating to kind of have this, you know, to see other places that have not done what we've done as far as having, you know. A very good balance and range of densities and then being pushed for even more densities. I just, it's not what I was hoping for, you know, I I just want to maintain that balance in Sandy. That that's my interest, so. Thank you, though. This has been very helpful to explain a lot of the objectives and uh, possible strategies we could adopt. Thank you.
Anybody from planning have any questions? You guys are quiet.
Uh, we can send feedback to Kelly. You can send it to, oh, Elliot or Jeff or myself, and we can filter it back to.
Perfect.
Uh, can we get it? I would love to hear their feedback.
Yeah, we can send it up to them.
Please.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll consolidate whatever feedback we get and then send it to the council as uh, one set of documents.
Thank you.
Have a bunch of emails trickling in.
I know some of our commissioners were gonna follow up with the video.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, you guys.
Have what you.
Do you have what you need and expected from this evening? Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you so much and thanks, Kelly.
Um.
Thank you.
So we will adjourn uh, the work session and reconvene at uh, seven twenty five. Got good for you guys?
Called City Council Regular Meeting to Order at seven twenty six. Please stand for budget allegiance.
Budget allegiance to the right of the United States of America. A liberal republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gently take a roll.
Absolutely, uh, Councilman Brezian. Uh, Council Sheldon, here. Council Walker.
Here.
Council Hopkinson.
Here.
Uh, Mayor Polian is obviously not here.
Excuse.
Yep. Okay, and Council President Smallwood.
Here.
Uh, any changes to the agenda? Okay. Um, public comment, I have, uh, one. Kevin, are you ready?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Council President Smallwood, City Councilors, I'm Kevin Moss, I recently moved in my dad's house over on Davis Street here.
We need to state your address.
Yeah, one eight zero two zero Davis Street. So thanks for the time tonight. So I've noticed, living in town here, over by the Dairy Queen, the new crosswalk enhancements over there that I know of at least two times before they were all put up, that the middle one was hit, knocked down, so I was just kind of confused. I saw just recently the other two popped up on either side, and we already have the sign there that says stop here for children, so I'm like, why just on this one? I know it's on the school side, but it just seems like it's creating more of a traffic hazard than solution, so I mean, I think we, with our new police chief in town, you know, we can do that for sidewalk safety, and the other item I want to address, I don't know if you were taking comment on the new business on the volunteer time off policy. I was reading that uh, last night, and I just was, I, I love the organizations, the Chamber of Commerce, you know, the hospice, they were great for, for my grandma and that, but I was a little concerned, it's kind of blanket policy of how long employees would be able to serve here, like the city business, so I just, if we have city employees, I, as a taxpayer, I want them to focus on city business and not volunteering, I mean, I could see, you know, setting an hour aside, something like that, breaks and lunches, but a policy under that to give, kind of blanket, from what I was reading, kind of concerns me as a taxpayer there. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We respond.
I was, I, I, yeah, do you want to ask?
Can I respond to, I'll respond to the piece that I'm aware.
Yeah, absolutely.
So when it comes to the volunteer piece, uh, the goal of that was, uh, I don't know if you know, well, how it started, I'm just gonna give you a little background, how it started is, we have at least one employee that works for TIPS, which goes out when somebody passes away and provides trauma-informed care for the family, right? Um, some of them were doing that on their taking vacation time to do that, right? So I, I asked Tyler to look at, um, also, we have, I should say, we have employees that go out and coach youth sports, some of them don't even have kids on the teams, they're just passionate about sport, so working with Tyler, there is a limit, uh, instead of having to take vacation, we're gonna give them, well, if it passes tonight, we're gonna give them twenty hours. So, in lieu of vacation, so that they can maintain their vacation for what's designed, but they can still be away from work for twenty hours for those volunteer purposes. Does that, does that answer your question?
And then Tyler maybe address the sidewalks, since it is ODOT project.
Yeah.
That's the one I was thinking.
Yes, I was waiting to see where we were gonna go first.
Talking, I didn't want to.
Okay, so. Yeah, so those, uh, bollards that were, um, installed by ODOT, uh, caught us by surprise as well several weeks ago, and they went in. Um, I just, uh, was communicating with ODOT at the end of last week on Thursday. Um, they are finishing up the last phase of their research project, um, and expect to wrap up the fieldwork in the next four weeks or so, so.
Those were the project, right?
Yes, that, that is the project, there is a, thank you, counselor, there was a, um, six sites throughout Oregon that ODOT identified as areas to explore, and that was one of the six sites um, to conduct a, a research study on to see if they could, uh, improve pedestrian safety. And so that study is wrapping up, um, I don't know what the, you know, results of that are gonna show. Um, but from what I can gather, those should be removed once that final phase is completed. Now, if the results are positive, in ODOT's lens, maybe they come back, maybe there's more, maybe they're permanent, we don't have any of that information yet.
I think the most important fact is to understand that Highway twenty six is not controlled by the city.
Exactly, yeah.
Anything they want to do on Highway twenty six, ODOT has the right to do without our permission, we can't start, we can't stop it.
Now, they did acknowledge that there was a severe lack of communication around the installation of those, um, and apologized for that lack of information, uh, or lack of, of communication, rather. Uh, what was that?
Coordination.
Coordination, communication, all the, uh, all of that, um, and we have some additional contacts now at ODOT, so hopefully going forward, we won't have some of those communication issues. Um, but to your point, Councilman, it is, uh, a state highway that the state has control over, and so our options to halt ODOT are very limited, we can either work with them and partner with them and try to make the best of it, or you know, throw our hands up, and I don't like the throw our hands up approach, but we just need that communication with them, so we can try to be an active partner, and we'll continue to do that going forward.
But we're here in eleven.
Perfect.
Yep.
Uh, Jeff, any public comment online?
Uh, I knew we had no registrations.
Okay, perfect, awesome. Uh, next is the consent agenda, and if there's no changes to that, I'm taking motion.
Make a motion, we accept the consent agenda.
I'll say it.
Okay, we have a motion by Counselor Sheldon and a second by Counselor Maiten, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Uh, new business. Volunteer time off policy.
Thank you, Council President Smallwood.
That's a mouthful, isn't it?
It doesn't roll off the tongue.
It doesn't, it doesn't at all.
But, uh, yeah, and I'm not, I'm not used to saying it, so. Uh, thank you. So tonight, uh, before you, we have a volunteer time off policy. Counselor Sheldon had brought this up, and, and you already kind of gave a nice introduction of this, Counselor Sheldon, with your public comment, uh, response. Um, brought up this opportunity to allow employees that are volunteering for local organizations, um, some paid time off in lieu of having to use their vacation time to do uh, work that benefits the entire community. And so I pulled some examples from, um, other communities, you know, uh, I'll be honest, that there is not a lot of examples in our region of, of cities that have policies like this, but I was able to find some examples from a few universities and a couple larger cities outside of the state that have um, similar policies, although very different, uh, hours allocated to the policy. Uh, and pulled some, um, you know, consistent language and themes that were in there, um, tried to, you know, reference what I took to believe to be the intent of the conversations that, uh, Counselor Sheldon and I had, uh, spoke with a couple other council members about this policy, um, and, you know, received no pushback about implementing this for, uh, an added benefit to our staff, as well as obviously the community at large. Um, you know, some key takeaways here is twenty hours of paid time off, um, per calendar year, employees can't use it, um, during their probationary period, they have to be in good standing to access these, and of course, it needs to be balanced with operational needs, so if there's uh, you know, uh, time where, um, we're severely short-staffed, or it's uh, you know, in my example, in the finance department, it's the day utility bills are due, and there's only one person working, you're not gonna get your time off, uh, volunteer time off that day, right? There's operational needs that still need to be accounted for. Um, and then, of course, some ineligible uses, uh, promoting religious, um, or political organizations or causes, and then any, uh, participating in any sort of behavior that discriminates based on all of the, um, uh, standard, you know, discrimination policies, we don't want any of that to to be taking place on city paid time. Uh, and with that, you know, I'll, I'll turn it over to you to ask any questions or provide any feedback about the policy, um.
Shall I make one amendment? Uh, I'd like to, uh, propose that we add, uh, to the areas that they can volunteer, uh, to coaching activities for youth sports.
Why? Tell, tell me, tell me.
Yeah.
Why you're thinking that?
Uh, I, you know, that's one of the things that I see is when I, uh, watch my kids play sports, there's, uh, there's employees that work for this organization that are out there coaching, uh, some of them don't have kids that are even in those programs, but they're out supporting the kids that are are those coaching.
Yeah, are, are those a five oh one C registered corps?
I believe Sandy youth football is, I believe Sandy, I, I believe they are. Um, I, I don't know the answer.
I don't know offhand, but we can certainly, um, look into that.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
Is there, and this is just my thought, because I, I'm, I'm for this, I just would like another guardrail put on it, because I, I would think that if we're paying them to, out of our budget to take this time and volunteer, that that volunteer should be specific to our community, and not outside of our community.
Absolutely.
And that doesn't, I didn't read that.
I didn't read that either.
Um, and I, I would, you know, I don't know if, I'm not saying our city limit for specific, but at least our zip code or.
Well, on the flip side, though, if you look at TIP, which is what kind of got me thinking, it is, it goes, it goes all the route, all around the county. So, I mean, you could get it, they could end up going to Collins Sandy, they could end up going to a call in Malala.
And I was a big advocate of that, as I used it myself when my wife passed away, and maybe there's an exception for that program, but I just, I don't see a volunteer, a city worker volunteering in Gresham for their child because they live there but work here, and then us paying for that wage, it, it doesn't, to me, it just doesn't feel right for the taxpayers of Sandy to pay for that, but if they're volunteering here in Sandy, then that feels, that feels more comfortable to me, in a, in a role like, like TIPS, I would absolutely support statewide coverage for that, um, for that time.
Let me ask you, like, east side soccer. It's all over, but it has Sandy connections as well. Yes or no on that?
Prob- probably no, it's not specifically Sandy.
So the coach that's coaching kids for Sandy kids, east side soccer can't coach, because it occurs in Gresham, and might have some Gresham kids?
That doesn't say they can't coach, they're just not a priority to get paid for, for volunteer time off, that they're not doing right now. They signed up for it without it.
You're, you're right.
Eastside soccer, I mean, they, I mean, back, it's been many years since my kids were on it, but they practice in Sandy, they have.
Not so much anymore, not as much, they're all over.
But, but my kid plays for that, and that's the example. So, I mean, I just, the guardrails, if we go down that, that avenue, is, is a little challenging. Um, I, I mean, I agree that somebody coaching that lives in Toallatin, coaching in Toallatin probably has negligible things. Um, and so you can get there, but I mean, I also struggle with just saying it has to be Sandy.
And I, and I do, it does say supervisor approval, so I, for me, I'm just asking, should we put a guardrail in place there, and I'm not saying it has to be just Sandy or else, it, I'm saying that there should be a guardrail that a supervisor looks at to give the approval for this, but then that supervisor's gonna want something clear and objective, because they don't want something that's subjective, so there, that's, that's.
Picking and choosing.
Yeah, I will say, that's overset on my part, um, I had intended to include Plaquemines County being the focus, so at least there was some guardrail on that, uh, specifically to your point about, you know, going to Multnomah County or whatever, or, um, excuse me. Uh, you know, I don't, I don't need to get paid to coach my kids soccer and you know, outside of the Sandy area, right? That's not the intent of, of what this was going towards, so if we are going down a guardrail, I mean, I think it needs to be broad enough, recognizing that TIP, for example, is all of Plaquemines County, um, you know, Mount Hitt Hospice, to use an example, is serving an area far larger than just the city of Sandy city limits, um, but yeah, I mean, it, some geographical boundaries.
Could you put sport, could you put sports organizations that service children that, that, from Sandy, the Sandy community, can we say something like that?
Yeah.
Does that sound fair? Yeah, I think so, uh, as long as, yeah, because it says, don't, don't most of the youth sports happen five, six o'clock at night anyway?
Mm-hmm, but on Saturdays? Sometimes, sometimes on the weekend? I mean, so that's the idea, right?
Just asking.
It's like, this should be, I mean, as the budget impact is, is no direct impact, right? This is just saying that if, if you need that time, that it's there for you.
Put someone, sorry. Oh, no, I was just gonna ask a quick, quick question, but you go ahead, because it's not, it's not pressing, okay? Uh, just a thought on another parameter, are you gonna put any, like, time constraints, like me as an employee, can I take ten hours off or eight hours off today, and then eight hours off tomorrow to go volunteer for something? Um, you know, or are you gonna say, hey, we're gonna do this, and it could be time, I'm just asking the question.
At this point, no, um, you know, I think, uh, most of the volunteer activity that I see is either staff that volunteer on local boards, since they're really taking off an hour or two at a time, um, or in the TIP example, it is a full, like, day shift, but those are on, like, an every other month or quarterly basis, and so they're not really stacking. Um, so I, if it became a problem, I think I could certainly address that in, uh, a future personal policy update, but, um, yeah, right now.
And I like the idea of having that, you know, kind of the, these regional organizations like TIP that have the potential to be serving Sandy, so if Sandy's one of their possible services based on need, I'm okay, you know, with that.
And maybe that's some language, um, uh, with an emphasis on, um, serving the Sandy.
Sandy community.
Sandy community, yeah.
Yeah.
So, when I first read this, I like it, I mean, I've worked at an agency as a contractor to them, but they have some other thing for their people. See a lot in the private sector. Yeah, they can pretty much do, and so I can see this as a, uh, as a staff retention strategy, as an extra benefit, and we'll point out that it does have a cost, it is technically a one percent budget hit or productivity hit, depending on how you look at it. The reality is no one would ever account for that in any measurable way. Um, and I'm gonna play Jeremy a, a little bit and go back and forth on this one, because I, I'm torn between the coaching and not coaching, I love the idea of city employees volunteering for city-sponsored events uh, that they might not otherwise be paid for, whether it's, or even sort of sponsored, solve, other things like that, getting some, some financial incentive there. Um, that, that I'm very much in favor of, it makes sense, I am a little concerned when we talk, start talking about serving on a board of directors. Uh, depending on who that board was for, whether or not that might start to look as a strange conflict, because we're technically paying an employee to be on a board that's independent. And, and so I'm, I'm nervous about that, so if there's a chamber or something like that, I'm not sure that's appropriate.
Okay.
I'm not sure that a city employee should sometimes serve in some of those functions anyway, so maybe my lack of, my sensitivity there may be raised higher than, than it should be. Um, so anyway, go back and forth on it, I guess, kind of on offense.
Yeah, um, so the, the policy currently sta- states, uh, you know, volunteer activities that enhance and serve the city of Sandy community, I can strengthen that language to you know, include an emphasis on uh, directly impacting or benefiting, um, the city of Sandy community, which firms up some of those guardrail concerns, but leaves it flexible enough that if it is a kid that's you know, a Sandy resident that just has to travel ten miles in the other direction for practice, I think that would still, you know, capture that serving the, the Sandy community, um, aspect, but I, I'm open to stricter or clearer language if you prefer that as well.
I think, I mean, Rich said it earlier, I don't know how you said it, but to me, it was about them being a Sandy resident. If there are Sandy resident participating in a countywide sport, I would be, I would be supportive of it, because there are Sandy residents. You, you know, ki- kid.
Can I add one thing, though? I'm not saying this is to take your kid to sports. This is to actually coach the team.
Right, no, that's right.
I want to be clear about that, so not, not just to drive my kid there.
Well, the coach would be the, would be the resident too.
Okay, yeah.
You know, whether it's a kid or a coach, it's supporting the Sandy residents. That, that, that's where their foundation is, um. I, I don't know how you do it, I'm, I just was looking for a guardrail, because I didn't want it, I didn't want to be a taxpayer myself, paying for somebody to volunteer to benefit another community.
It could be that the sports is just too hard to put. I'll just throw that at Rich, I know that's what you started it with, but it might be it's too hard to put guardrails on.
I don't think it is if we say this.
So you either leave it flexible enough to a supervisor, and evaluate, you know, your, down the road.
Which creates a mess.
Yeah.
Allow one person and then don't allow the next, and then it's a, it's a huge issue.
But if you're allowing, you know, the tip thing where it's like, you know, they service Sandy, and east side soccer services Sandy, and, and so I feel like that, that should be the, you know, I, I'm not too worried if they go play a game in Gresham and, you know.
We, we could change the nature of the debate, you know, call it any of these other national subjects, but when you go to something like TIP, it's like, of course, we want a simple, everybody wants to support, but then other types of volunteer, I think, I've, you know. And I want to bring up one more elephant in the room, and I, I don't want to offend anybody by doing it, but in general, our nonprofits have been not political. And by third, by definition, they're, they're not political. However, a nonprofit can have a political arm in the form of a PAC. And recently, we've seen one that has a PAC, with, now, not same people, different things, I just want to make sure.
They're not one and the same.
No, no, you're right, you're right, and even, even in things like unions and things, they're, they are operating separate, they'll offer, you know, their five oh one C, and then there will be a separate PAC, now this case, we just, that's uncomfortable. I just want to make sure that we don't get into a situation where where our people are volunteering, and it's starting to move into a political, because that would be inappropriate, so we just have to, and I mean this in general, not this specific. You're not granting any? Huh?
I, I mean, I, I guess I gotta hang my hat on the, or supporting political slash religious organizations, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, I, I totally understand what you're saying.
But I'm throwing it out there as a warning, because the Lion King.
Well, and the, the supervisor's supposed to review, you know, that stuff, yeah. So I make, I moved to authorize the city manager to implement the volunteer time off policy as outlined in the attached document with the amendments talking about any organi- nonprofit organization that services kids in, uh, services anybody in Sandy to be included.
Okay, second. Okay, I have a motion, uh, by Council Walker and a second by Council Sheldon, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. Uh, yeah.
Thanks, I will, I didn't mention this.
In case you looked at it later, I'm shaking my head, but I did not say no, I said aye.
I heard you.
Okay, all right.
Uh, I didn't mention this in the staff report, but what, um, I'll do is maybe in six months or twelve months, bring back a recap of just how this was utilized, the organizations that were benefited by it, just to give you kind of a tangible result of, of the benefit that the policy has provided the community.
Yeah, and along with that, I mean, if you start to run into some hiccups, and we need to, we need to hone it in a little bit, you know, let us know.
Absolutely.
Do you have any idea of what a baseline would be of what people's volunteer hours look like right now? So that you can have something to compare it to in a year from now, and see if this policy has grown, volunteered?
Yeah, we could certainly, I, I'm hesitant to throw anything off the top of my head, but we can go through time cards over the last six months and, and point pretty easily uh, some of those.
You've just been here a while, maybe, maybe you just keep a note of it.
Well, I mean, I, I could give you the example of City Hall really easily, um, and it's probably thirty hours total uh, in the last year at City Hall.
Just write that number down, and let's do a comparison.
Okay.
Because I'm, I'm, I'm curious to see what it does, if it drives behavior change, uh, for, for volunteers.
Sounds good.
Can I ask a clarifying question? I know we just approved it, but does that mean twenty hours between now and January, and another twenty hours in January? Or is it pro-rata for this year?
In, in theory, it's twenty hours between now and January, and.
Is that what was intended? Is that what was intended? Do we, do we need to revisit this? Okay, if we're.
I, I think it's a small enough impact, um, and a, a sparse enough, um,
Participation.
Participation, I couldn't think of the word, thank you, participation, that it won't have a uh, negative impact, uh, over the next three months.
I think you could always volunteer one hundred first.
They could, hundred percent, we need more.
All right, uh, so Tyler, back to you, staff report for the League of Oregon Seacs.
Yeah, thank you, um, I'll be very brief, and I'll kick this one over to Jeff, so every year, um, or every few years, I guess, uh, the league, um, puts out their survey for legislative priorities. Uh, as done in past years, Jeff sent out a survey to, to gauge interest from all the council members, has sort of weighted that, and provided it in the staff report as to what the major areas of focus are, and with that, Jeff? and provided it in the staff report as to what the major areas of focus are. And with that, Jeff, you can please jump right in.
Yeah, I I don't have a Sunday ad. I think this staff report's hopefully pretty self-explanatory. We received responses from four counselors. So it's not everyone. I was not surprised to see the structure at the top. But this is just an opportunity. We have the ability to submit our top five. Doesn't mean we have to submit five. So that's really this discussion. Do you agree with this top five? Do you want to change them? You do have the full list in your packet if you want to pick some others instead. So with that, I'll just kick it over to the council.
Can I, I maybe asked you when we talked about this before, but if the council says just infrastructure, does it get five votes for infrastructure? Do we have to say infrastructure five times? Does it? I mean, how's that weighted when they get it?
That's an excellent question. I don't know the answer. If the council's direction is staff, please pursue that, I will definitely try to do that.
Gotcha.
So in my, in my, I'm just gonna share with my my logic when I answer these questions. Obviously, I picked infrastructure being number one. But, you know, I and I did put transportation package high, but I I got in full disclosure. The only reason I did that was because I know it's the priority in this legislative session. And I do think there's some some stuff we could benefit from that. But the way that's weighted in my mind is like this. So, and even more so than that, my arms just don't go that way. But so that's pretty big, but also the the piece that's down here, this the three point two five, the restoration of recreational immunity. I have to admit, when I walked our future park, that was definitely on my mind when I saw that. And so like, I think I answered these questions before that, but I probably would have given that a higher priority of as well as I did during that time, for what that's worth as well.
Well, as I say, I answered these questions based on what I thought our city's priorities were. And some of the, some of the questions I had no knowledge of. And so I just clearly I did them lower, but I will state, hearing that only four counselors provided feedback, one is very disappointing, because this is the legislative process to get things done. And only, you know, maybe just a fraction more than half of us participated, that that's disappointing. But I I agree with Rich, infrastructure I is our number one need and I, and as Don said, if I could put all my marbles there, I would just say, let's talk about infrastructure. Because everything else doesn't really matter unless we get money for infrastructure and.
Yeah, I don't want to speak on behalf of the mayor either, but that was a similar conversation I have with him, that infrastructure is what the focus needs to be all day, every day, basically.
Almost singular. Does our lobbyist have an opinion on this?
I I do have one question for that. This place-based planning. I, again, like you, it it talked about water supply. And I was kind of just trying to clarify, because, you know, I've done this place-based planning and talked about woo-woo type efforts.
Said that three times real fast. Place-based planning.
Forest Service is all big on that for a while. The, but I'm just kind of confused if like that's for something that would benefit us or if that's just water supply rather than actual, you know, treatment and protection of the watershed or whatever. Is it, you know?
I will admit that I was not familiar with it. It came out of, so there are legislative policy committees that come up with these proposals, and this did come from the Water Waste Water Committee. It reads to me like it's drinking water focused. I don't have more, I'm happy to get more information to come back to.
But, you know, it's just, yeah, because I wouldn't have called it place-based plan.
I thought it was kind of oddly worded.
Yeah, that's kind of a real woo-woo process and, you know, whereas this water supply is really, I think, infrastructure type of stuff, or I thought it was.
On page one fourteen, I think, the very last page, it does talk about this. It says, Oregon's water supply management issues are complex. In twenty fifteen, the legislature created a place-based planning pilot program, even more P's.
Lot of P's.
In Oregon, administered through the Oregon Water Resources Department, that provides a framework and funding for local stakeholders to collaborate and develop solutions to address water needs within a watershed basin, surface water or groundwater. And then twenty twenty-three, something about a drought resilience and water security package. So having said all that, I still don't know what it means, but I thought it pretty much. I I would like to hear what you said.
Of course. I don't really have that much more to add, other than I think you were all on the right path. Infrastructure, as we all know, is definitely a major issue that actually the whole state is facing. I actually had a conversation with Jeff about this earlier. For example, like the transient lodging tax, while it's important in a lot of other cities, I don't think it really impacts Sandy all that much. And then I did actually have a conversation with both Jim McCully and Michael Martin, there we go. And, you know, we were talking about this and he was saying, you know, we realize infrastructure is such a big deal. The question is how we're gonna get additional funding with this giant transportation package coming down the pipeline, so.
Now, we can ask you a question.
Please, please.
So just can you help me wrap my, wrap my mind around the legislative process here? Why, if the rest of the state, to include us, is having infrastructure challenges, why is the state deciding to focus on transportation? What's what's, I'm just trying to understand the logic so that I can make the connection between the two.
That's, that's a great question, and it's very multifaceted. I think that, you know, since we had a big push for housing last session, they're kind of looking at transportation, because the last big transportation package we had was twenty seventeen. That passed, the problem is, it got kind of sidewalled by a lot of opposition in the Rose Quarter. You know, complications about being shovel-ready in Clackamas County, and so there are a lot of kind of aspects to that. Now the price of those projects have increased dramatically, and so the state is looking at that. Combined with the fact that Oregon and actually the nation as a whole, I think Michael was telling me today that the entire country, I think, got a C in terms of infrastructure. And so it's one of those things that's been woefully funded, underfunded for the last fifty-plus years, and now we're kind of coming at the apex of that. And the projects are really expensive and it's kind of, everyone's just slow. My interpretation is everyone's slowly trying to dig their way out piece by piece or rock by rock, but.
I would say that, you know, given that they're pushing all the housing stuff, you know, I mean, for we got roads, but you know, if you don't, I mean, I just feel like they're setting up more than our town for even more problems with the infrastructure.
I couldn't agree more. And I mean, we've had conversations with soon-to-be Rep. elect Drayzen and others in the district area, and you know, I think they, they def- I know they understand the need for infrastructure. It's just differentiating, you know, how strong is the governor gonna come out in support of this? I did have a conversation, I know last session, we kind of talked about Representative Gomberg kind of did his own kind of infrastructure package kind of on the side. He is not doing that this next year. I spoke with him directly and he said that he actually kind of passed the torch to the governor's office, who just is in the process of replacing her housing person. So I'm hoping that as soon as that person is hired, we can be in his or her office and really kind of hit that home, but.
So when we make this, going back to the question for LOC, what what do you think is beneficial messaging from this council? For LOC, or is it so indirect that it doesn't really even matter what we tell them?
Oh, I mean, I don't think it's, it, I think it matters. I mean, I think definitely saying infrastructure is your number one. I don't think that it hurts to sign off on all five, even though all five won't necessarily affect you that much, but if you can't in fact hone in on just infrastructure, then I I don't really see any harm in that. I don't know if either of you have a.
Yeah, we can certainly follow up with LOC two and figure out, to your point, Council of Open Sin, can we vote five times for infrastructure or not?
Honestly, I mean, if that is the direction for the council, I will pursue every angle to try to effectuate that. If I can't, then we can just do these five, if that makes sense to the council.
Well, I think, you know, I I will put a vote in for the recreational immunity, because that's, I think, important, but but the lodging tax flexibility, you know, in hindsight, now I will tell you, though, that the whole mountain area, you know, huge problem. They actually lost ten people in their last ten-year census because of all the short-term rentals. And so they're losing population, and I do have some concerns that that will kind of move. I don't know that they've even restricted anything up there. There's been I don't think a lot of movement from the county on that front. And so as that becomes, you know, an issue, I I think it could potentially, I do agree that we need to kind of be looking, you know, with our housing policy and stuff about how to kind of manage those better. And and for starters, just getting them, know where they are and start collecting the room tax, because that's free money that we could have. But I don't think that that, you know, that's rated as a four, whereas this place-based planning, whatever, is three and yeah, so I I would almost want to change the water supply stuff to, you know, four and the lodging to three if I was.
And this is, you mean, you'd want to flip transportation and place-based planning?
Uh, not transportation, it's already, uh.
Because there's three point five. It's okay, it's okay.
Yeah, okay, just, you know, maybe. Yeah, I would, you know, I mean, if the water supply is actually, you know, money for our water needs, then I would want to kind of bump the score up on that one. And then possibly the transportation one too, if that's the, you know, if that's where all their money, the money's gonna, you know, that's a big purse of money, let's, you know, get what we can on that, even if it's for the Gunderson, whatever, you know, who knows what what we could put in there. I don't know off the top of my head.
I hear you're saying putting lodging tax flexibility last.
Yeah.
That's what I. They're close enough, I'm hiking here.
Thank you, Nellie.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Tyler, does that get you what you need?
Thank you.
All right, well, you're still up.
Yeah, it's me again. Um, just a couple of updates this evening. So as you know, Councilor Exner's seat was declared vacant at the last meeting. We have subsequently started recruitment for that seat. We have two applicants so far. Brandon Zawoski and Michael Thompson, so we're still, those are, postings are still open. Remind me what the.
A week, a week from Wednesday.
Target agreeing for that position right now?
I'm sorry.
What what vehicles are you using to recruit for?
So put it in the same source newsletter. It's pinned to our website. I'm trying to think of what, we definitely did those two. Don't believe we put out a dedicated post on Facebook.
The Sandy posted.
That's right. Yeah.
Brandon and.
And, uh, Michael Thompson. Yeah, we can push it out on social media as well. And then in regards to a different crosswalk issue, not the one that we already talked about, but the crosswalk on Pioneer in front of Sandy Action Center where that pedestrian accident happened a couple of weeks ago. We are gathering some quotes on cost of installation for a flashing crosswalk there. Working with ODOT to review some funding options on who really should be bearing the cost of that. And then we'll submit the application to ODOT as soon as we have that information to see if we can get that approved, so. It's a, it's a pretty not overly complicated process, but just something we haven't done before, and so we'll see how that relationship or the process with ODOT goes.
Just another thought on that crosswalk, just something that maybe we want, might want to think about would be to not allow parking before, before it.
Yeah.
For a, for a, for a space of of how, you know, because having driven that a few times this week contentionally, if there's a big enough vehicle obstructing your view and there's a car parked there and somebody comes out, I can totally see where a driver would not see, especially a, you know, a shorter person.
Yeah.
Or a child. So, so yeah, so maybe look at, maybe no parking right there.
Yeah, we can look into that. You know, you have the bus stop directly behind that one or two parking spots that's there too, so you're, you can really stack up the, the visual, the lack of visual side of line of sight for the crosswalk with buses and cars pretty quickly there.
I I love the light. I think when, when the state did that widening, we talked about the reduction of spaces there, and I think, seems like my memory was they limited us to the layout that we ended up with.
Yeah, I don't, I don't remember. Maybe you could be correct, yeah.
And but on the same thought, Lindy reminded me of a place that I'd run into years ago, Lindy Handley in the audience. Where the city implemented a very simple thing where they just put a kind of like a little flag holder next to a pole with.
For the library and the bag.
Maybe they did it here too. I don't remember here, but I've seen other places, but three or four flags, orange flags, when you're crossing the street, you grab one, you put it out there. You stop, you put it on the other side, and they generally, and in the city, I ran into that. It worked pretty decent, actually, surprised me. And then if you ever needed an orange flag for your water skin too, you knew where to get one as well, but.
Or just tie off something hanging too far off your vehicle?
Yeah, but but anyway, and maybe even something as simple as that might be a good stopgap measure.
Definitely, certainly kind of that as well. And then last but not least, for me this evening, I sent out an email this weekend about the joint values and outcomes from C four. I have printed copies if anyone wants to take another look at that, but they are looking to get cities to sign off. As I understand it, Sandy and West Leonard are the only two cities that haven't signed off yet on this letter, for lack of a better term, and so I guess just wanted to have a quick dialogue with the council on, are we in support of adding our logo to this? For submission to the state legislature with the transportation package, or do we have concerns still? There was some conversation around not enough focus on rural communities. I think that.
That was the, that was the conversation the last time it came up.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that is still not entirely rectified, but it likely won't ever be entirely rectified. The rural communities don't get as big of a push, unfortunately. There was some language added about rural communities in here. At this point, this is the final draft, so it's not going to get revised and made stronger. But I did reiterate those comments when I submitted the feedback that I received from the council to make the final final group of revisions that were made.
Seems like it's the best we're gonna get and seems like by saying, by putting our logo on it, maybe we earn a little flagship bonus, you know, down the road that we can call it. I don't know. It's probably not gonna hurt us, so.
I don't, I was gonna say, I don't think it doesn't harm.
Right, exactly.
So. I support it.
Guess it's like giving it a little like face, but it was cool.
Okay, great. We'll get the logo added and sent back to the county for their submission of the the letter. That's all for me.
Don, you're up.
All right, well, I missed Carl, but Carl doesn't miss us. He sent me an email to read. Hey, Don, maybe you could bring up use of skateboarders on our sidewalks. He pointed out that both the motorized and and the regular traditional, that until the skate park gets built and after he had an incident where it looked like a teen kid was cruising down Pioneer sidewalk, where they're narrower and an elderly man is coming out of the barber shop and almost got hit. Not an uncommon situation. I mean, these kinds of issues, whether it's a biker or skateboarder, been around since I was a kid. But nonetheless, I think it's a good reminder for us to think about where do we want bikers and scooters, and especially as we move into an electric world where these things start to look more like a car in terms of their speed and capabilities. I think we're gonna have to start thinking about that, you know, what's appropriate for different, different things. I mean, it's one thing with a young kid. That's another with a grown adult cruising down the sidewalk at a pretty good clip, so. Something to think about. He did point out that maybe we just need to, like you do on the ski slopes, you know, right side as you're coming around do a little education. So anyway, throw it out there. I don't know what the right answer is yet, but.
Are motorized scooters allowed on the sidewalks?
Well, so, so here's the, here's the interesting point, here's the interesting point about that. You don't know. I don't know. And I'm guessing most of the people riding them don't know. So we have an education to, even if they already are prohibited as to what the right places for the wrong place is to to be in, and so I think that's something we're gonna have to, we could address through. If code maybe, but really it's more of an education and the PSA kind of thing, I think.
Yeah, at least that's just a question that when you were talking, it came to my mind is, if I have a motorized scooter, am I allowed to be on the sidewalk or not? I just don't know the answer.
Can't remember that. There's numbers, so it's based, a lot of the motorized stuff is based on how many cc's or watts that thing is and and that.
That's how big it is.
And then also, is there, is there a lane available for it, so I get bike lane or something?
And like part cars on our back bench in the downtown.
So the answer is like, it's complicated.
And I just learned last week that there is a state rule about recreational trails, and if they're over eight feet and you don't want electric devices on them, you have. you have to post that they're not allowed, otherwise by default they are if they're over eight feet. If something, I mean, don't quote me exactly on that, so, that fair point. Uh, but I thought that was interesting that you have to expressly prohibit it if it's in excess of eight feet. Heard that at a city manager meeting last week.
Uh, one other item then, if unless there's anything else on that. So uh, Council Maiden and I met with uh Angie to talk about the uh review of he who will not be named Tyler. Um, okay, we named him, put.
The city manager.
The city manager review process. So we were assigned to meet and, and talk about what kind of process we wanted to go through. And we recommend that uh Angie uh acquire a three, a formal three sixty degree review package. We buy one from somebody rather than make one. Apparently in the past, one of the counselors made his own up, um.
Now, actually, Angie provided three different doc, three different past performance reviews to us. Two of them were done by the city council. One of them was a combination three sixty, which uh previous city council did himself. And we looked at them and me and Don discussed it with Angie. We didn't think that the city council was the only participant to grade the performance of a city manager, even though the city manager works for the city council, that we should have their peers and their subordinates also grading them, so we voted.
Community, so, so we would, we would go up and down, so council sent to Tyler, Tyler to direct reports and then out to some community reps. And so truly try to get a three hundred sixty degree uh feedback as to how he's doing with the emphasis. I mean, we, we knew when we, we chose Tyler, we were hiring somebody who was, he wasn't here, we're just gonna talk about him like he's not there. We're hiring somebody who was, you know, knew in the executive position and we knew we were going to want to provide some coaching and some feedback and this, this could be a powerful vehicle. It won't cost very much. And it seemed to make a lot of sense. So we want to see how you all feel about that. If you're supportive, then we'll go ahead. Um, we, we haven't picked a specific three sixty. I don't think we care as long as it's, you know, comprehensive enough.
And each of us will still get our own, I'm just gonna guess, eight to fifteen questions to answer ourselves individually about our experience with the city manager. And that's gets included in the packet, but it, we just wanted to make sure that all members of the city council had opportunity to hear what our thoughts were and see if there was anybody in huge disrepute with the way we were thinking before we proceeded.
And then, so at the end of that review process, we would have these analyzed results summarized, you know, with comments and things. And then we'd go into the executive session, review those results. And at the end of that, once we're decided on where we're at, we'd call Tyler and review it with him. And, and that would be the end of our process. That's where we're thinking. All right, thanks. That's it for me.
Um, the library board um had a, a quick review of uh their strategies that they had done and kind of the compliment accomplishments. They had, they, I think they had done it up to like twenty twenty-two or something, but since it included COVID time, which totally, you know, messed everything up uh with the library, they, we extended their, our kind of report card timeline to two thousand and twenty-four. So we kind of review what's been accomplished and most of the stra- um goals and things have been accomplished. We talked about setting goals um going forward to the future. The LDAC Library District Advisory Committee to the Clackamas County folks um have kind of come up with some strategies and all. And they're um, they're more, a little bit more generic, but they do kind of seek to move forward uh review uh and reissuance of a possible library bond. Um, so I just kind of mentioned that, you know, well, if that's their, if that's their intent, it, you know, they need to make sure they've got all the count, all the cities councils on board for that approach. So um then the discussion went to, should we kind of create some goals that are a little bit more specific to Sandy? And there was interest in doing that. So I think we're gonna kind of probably uh cobble them together, but uh when they, when they have a draft or something, they'll probably want to have you guys review it. I think there still is interest in doing a um workshop at some point with the library just to kind of talk about, you know, what they do and what they offer and things like that. So um I think it, you know, what I've learned is that, you know, it's a very complex process and there is, I think, a concern. Uh, I know there's a concern from them that because so much of the library district and patrons that we have are not city residents and do not vote for city council, there's, I think, a mis, you know, an impression that we're not listening or, you know, something like that. That, you know, and I'm listening, but I, but I do think it would be helpful for you all to learn how the district funding comes and that we can all be advocates for, for the future of the library. So, yeah, good. They're all working hard. Um, the um, I will kind of uh mention with those crosswalks, you know, I think there's like thirty-nine or forty crosswalks in Sandy, just in the downtown between the two uh divided streets there. And, you know, obviously, I think there was a push on this Sandy Action Community Center crosswalk, but, you know, but that could have happened only at any of the crosswalks. And at some point, and I'm not saying we gotta add it, you know, next week or next month, but it would be helpful, you know, to, I think you brought it up before Dawn about having, you know, which crosswalks get white striping, which don't. Um. You know, what's the future plan? Do we want to kind of put up these little blinking lights like what we did at the school, which I think was only five or six thousand dollars? It wasn't a huge amount. But, you know, do we want to kind of create, you know, some more safety crossings, you know, at key points? And where are those on, on either side of the highway? Um, and then uh another thing I was gonna, did, I was, happened to be calling Tyler on my, you know, hands off phone. Uh, while I was waiting to get to the Dutch Bros, because my husband wanted a Dutch Bros today, this afternoon. And it took me about twelve minutes, you know, from the time like I passed City Hall to get over up to the Dutch Bros. And so um I just, you know, just having some sort of uh attention on that, you know, maybe taking away, figuring out about the no U-turn thing, um possibly closing off that access point to seven eleven that's on Tenic. That creates, because a lot of people want to go, go to Dutch and so then the only way to get there is to go through the seven eleven, which presents huge safety issues and stuff. So I just, you know, somehow kind of creating, uh, just fixing that whole kind of uh cluster there that's uh creates a lot of uh trap, just a lot of traffic problems there in that intersection that I know we've known about. I know that no U-turn sign's been there far before, far longer than Dutch Bros has been around, so. And, you know, if there's a good reason for it, well then, you know, let's hear it. But otherwise, I'm not sure, you know, it's, it's the best um approach. And then I'm just also interested in how the um uh school stuff, you know, we maybe at the next meeting just give this briefing on the school uh situation with the um roads. Um, and then also the um, I, I still want to kind of have the um meeting about the hauling, you know, common and stuff, so. Now that you're back. And I don't know if it's a you Jenny thing or an AJ thing, so whoever's, you know, able to kind of talk to those folks and talk about options and things like that would be helpful. I think that's it. All right, thanks.
Rich.
All right. I just want to thank you guys all for your support of the um volunteer time. I have worked for organizations that have it. Um, I didn't never, never used it. Um, but I, it's always great when I, when I go to those things and, and it's the age that my kids are at, but um, you know, out in the community events and, and seeing people that I now know work for the city and at different events and volunteering their time. And I think it's a good representation of our city as well. So uh I think it's, it's awesome that they can take, keep two more vacation ti- days is really what it comes down to if they use it all to go spend with their family and still be able to provide support for bike organizations. So, thank you. Um, with that being said, uh, I have to admit, I'm just gonna get on, I get the chance to be on the soapbox for a minute. So tonight's presentation that I heard was kind of um, really, I just want to make sure this is what I heard tonight. And so if it wasn't correct, then, then please educate me later. But I heard that uh this is basically, they're demanding that we subsidize housing um and that um and that they're just gonna do what they're gonna do regardless, which is, which is, I, I understand that's how it is. Um, but I, I just would ro- almost rather hear that directly than, than, than to play the soft politics and tell us that, you know, it's all gonna be okay, we're here to support you, we want you to grow the way you want, all that. I, I just, I don't believe that and, and maybe I just don't trust it. But the other piece is that I didn't get a chance to say is uh, and unless I'm wrong, are we the only community in Sandy that has the consent decree that we have that prevents, right? I mean, like other communities are saying, hey, how'd you get so lucky to the degree, but also it brings a different set of challenges. But I don't think that they fully understand that or appreciate it for what it's worth. Um, so I, I don't want to keep beating that messenger up, but I gotta admit, every time that they come, it, it, my blood pressure goes up because I think it's just a little public. I can't use that word. It's not, it's, it's.
That's what it is, though.
It's what it is, right? So um, yeah. Uh, the last piece is, you know, the, the contradictory piece, and I'll go back and I'll find it. But, you know, we brought up, I brought up short term rentals as being a thing and one of them that they're here. And we were told that was negligible, but yet tonight they're talking to, I'm hearing them tell us that we need to do that or that's a possible strategy. So I, I kind of feel like they're talking out both sides of their mouth and I just, I don't appreciate it for what it's worth, so. I'd rather just be direct. Um, so that's it. That's all I have.
So again.
I don't have anything. I have, um, I had no planning committee and no economic development. So my only thing left on the table was to ask, are we still on for Alder Creek next Friday? So good?
Yes, we are. Great.
Sure.
Okay.
Do we have a plan for where we're going to meet?
I was thinking here and caravanning up the entrances. It's easy to dance.
This is, this is actually, I'm glad you brought it up. So we've been having some conversations about, should we try to get the community center uh bus, for lack of a better word? Would you, would you like that or would you rather just use your own car instead?
Whatever's easy to.
Already have the traffic, it's pretty bad, so.
Been driving here.
Okay, so we can arrange the community center shuttle? Yep.
If it's not being used, you know.
Yeah, it's available.
Okay.
Okay, all I've got, uh, the parks uh board met last Wednesday and did a tour of Cedar Park. Um, Chief Husky came along with us and uh so we were able to walk throughout the entirety of the park and see the uh pump track and the skate park and um uh the walking path and where the all abilities and all of that's gonna be. Uh, one thing that did come out of that was a concern and we brought it up in the homeless task force uh meeting that we had, and I don't need to give you an update on that because we sent out a, a good uh update on that meeting, I think. But uh was the need for that park to be fenced um to prevent uh a drain on our law enforcement having to go in there every single night, hour on hour, because people are in the pump track after hours or in the skate park after hours or, or whatever. So uh one from a safety standpoint, but also just from a menacing standpoint. So um, so we talked about that with Tyler.
And more specifically a gate on the parking lot, not just.
Yep, yeah.
Fencing in general.
Not just fencing in general, yeah, yeah, so, because there's the two entrances there, so.
Um, so we'll, we'll look into that, not to interrupt you, but.
No, you're fine.
Can reduce impact on the neighbors.
Correct, fine, yeah.
Yeah.
Because the neighbors, the neighbors, yeah, negative impacts. The neighbors are concerned about, you know, interruptions at night and whatnot.
That is, I mean, that's a huge task, seven days a week to be opening and locking. Um, yeah.
One thing I asked Tyler to look into is um, there's communities that have gates that um essentially on a timer that might be an option, because I agree. And then it wouldn't have to come down to that. And I don't know how much more that would be, but it might be worth it. The cost.
Yeah, well, and that, those, uh, when options are available.
And also for the preservation of the park.
Yeah, oh, yeah. No, I think it's real important. I've already heard from one neighbor.
Yeah.
Chad, he was concerned that those are near there.
So, so that's all I've got. Um, before we adjourn and go into our executive session uh from you guys, are you guys need a little break or you get to just roll right into it once we excuse the, the audience? Okay, so I'm going to uh adjourn at eight twenty-four. Thank you, everyone, for being in attendance and.